We will now go to the joint meeting with the Tinsborough School Committee. So I am, forgive me, I'm not sure who the chair is.
I'm the chair. This is Ryan McMahon.
Okay, hi Ryan.
Hi.
Do you want to confirm that your members of the board are present?
Yes. As I call your name, please say present. Rob Mullin.
Present.
Mike Moran.
Present.
Tony Tenerella.
Present.
Rebecca Stanton.
Present.
Jeff Bo.
Present.
Julia Stucci.
Present.
And I'm present. That's all seven members. Our staff, Dr. Flanagan.
Present, thank you.
Dr. Branco.
Present.
Mr. Messina.
Present.
We are all here.
Okay, so the purpose of this joint meeting with the school committee is to discuss COVID-19 and how it impacts the community as well as the school committee. So Ryan, I guess I'll turn it over to you. I believe that you have specific questions of the Board of Health. Is that correct?
Thank you for meeting with us tonight. We really appreciate it. As you're aware, you know, we've been struggling with COVID, you know, since last March and trying to make the best decisions for the schools. Part of that process is, I know specifically, we really want to understand the details of the contact tracing and what goes into that. That was a big item that we've discussed a lot and we're hoping you can walk through that process for us.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Carrie or Michelle, do you want to, Carrie probably start off with the process? She's muted.
Oh, sorry. Hi. So as far as contact tracing, how we get cases is through Maven, which is a Massachusetts surveillance system for all communicable diseases. So as soon as it goes into Maven, we are notified at the local Board of Health or whoever has access to Maven. And that's how we find out if cases are positive. And once we get it, we either accept the case or we send it to CTC and then with, with, just with the staff of two people, most of our cases are sent to CTC, which is a contact tracing collaborative that is ran by the state. And CTC would contact the cases that they're contact the cases and go over the quarantine and isolation requirements, ask who may be, who may be close contacts to those, to the positive case member. And that's how, and then it just goes on that either CTC or if the Board of Health takes the case, we also contact the close contacts to go over the quarantine information with those people.
And I might just add that we also sometimes are contacted first by either workplaces or the individuals themselves. Sometimes they get the positive notification before the Board of Health does. And conversely, sometimes the Board of Health gets the notification before the person does.
So Michelle, in those situations where you're notified by the person themselves, what's the lag time between that call and that case showing up in Maven?
It can vary. It can be a day, it could be hours, it could be a week. I mean, it just varies.
Okay.
Primarily. So if, from the school perspective, I really appreciate it when families do notify us because often that is a quicker notification than when it's in Maven. But that being said, Carrie and I work very closely together. We communicate daily. And any cases that Carrie notes that could be connected with the school, she notifies me right away. Usually just by case number and telling me to take a look at a certain case just to see if it has any connection. And also I am watching the cases as they come in and I cross-reference the addresses to see if there's any connection to the schools. We really try to stay on top of any cases that may have any connection to the schools.
Good. What's the response been like when you're trying to do the contact tracing? People forthcoming with who they've been in contact with and providing that information?
From my perspective, yes, almost always. There has been a few cases here and there that people are less than forthcoming. But what I try to do is explain the situation, explain that the information will be kept confidential. Sometimes people don't want other people to know that they're the source. But we do everything we can to maintain confidentiality and use the education of why this is important, how contact tracing keeps the community safe and it reduces the spread of the virus.
Okay. I know one of the topics that's come up for us is you identify a positive case, you do the contact tracing, and you're trying to notify close contacts to prevent further spread. Do you go backwards to try to identify where that positive case contracted the COVID?
Often I do ask if they know where they may have come in contact with the virus because I do think that's important, especially in the school setting. Nine times out of 10, the cases that I'm working on that are school-related, it's from a household source, sometimes a work source. Very few and far between is the situation that the person is not aware of the source. Carrie, I think Carrie may have a different perspective though because her pool of cases is a little different than the cases that I work on, since the ones I work on are all associated with the schools. Would you agree with that, Carrie?
Yeah, definitely. Some of the cases that I worked on, when I asked where they may have gone it, some of the times they said they don't know. Sometimes they're asymptomatic and it's part of routine testing at work and that's how they found out that they're positive. There are cases from workplace and there are some from household as well, but to go to the index case, some of the times they don't know where they got exposed to COVID-19.
Okay, thank you Carrie. I'll open it up to other school committee members to ask questions.
Right, I have a quick question. In looking at the numbers that we've seen so far, looking, going back into Thanksgiving and times after the holidays, we had seen a spike in numbers pretty consistently after the holidays. And then over this last week, we actually, and this is a good thing, it seemed like that spike did not occur. Is that something that you were anticipating? Are we just thinking about this too soon and that we wouldn't see that spike just yet? Or did we just happen to catch a break from a, from a Tinsborough perspective?
Carrie, do you want this one or do you want me to answer?
You go ahead, Michelle. I think we talked about it earlier too, about how the numbers kind of level off, so.
Yeah. From my perspective, it's, I would say it's unexpected. I did expect at least this week, the cases to rise a little bit more. I think the potential is there for the cases to still rise, perhaps next week. But I am pleasantly surprised and very happy that the cases are where they are, especially since the state itself has really been having record numbers. And when we had the surge after Thanksgiving, I felt that our numbers were kind of, for lack of a better term, like we were getting our fair share of the cases because as they rise in the state, we're of course going to rise here. But I feel like our cases maybe are not rising at the same rate that the overall state is right now. And I'm very, very pleased and I hope that's because perhaps members of our community have really taken heed to the warnings and are really adhering to the guidelines and, and so practicing social distancing and wearing their masks. I really hope that that is the reason why that Tinsborough seems to be doing reasonably well right now and I hope that we can keep it up.
Thank you.
I think one thing we just have to be careful of, Thanksgiving was basically just two or three days where the Christmas and then it's New Year's, we're looking at a longer time period of potential families coming together. So I do believe that we do run the risk of our numbers continuing to perhaps go back up depending upon, you know, the number of potential exposures that might have been within families celebrating. I think we saw Thanksgiving hit really quickly. And maybe there was a little bit of a lax time between family groupings or as Michelle said, hopefully everyone heeded what we were trying to get out there as well as what Governor Baker was trying to get out there about social distancing and really only participating in family holidays with your, your own home. One thing I do worry about a little, and the upcoming numbers from the state will reveal this. I'm wondering about the positivity rate and I'm wondering how many people are getting tested. I can't speak for the town specifically, but with the school where we were off for about 10 days, there is the chance that some people just didn't get tested because they figured they could just lay low for a week and stay home. So I really am going to be looking at the positivity rate and the rate of testing in the upcoming weeks.
Michelle, to that point, I think the numbers we looked at earlier this afternoon showed an actual uptick. There's a small increase in number of tests performed last week compared to the week before.
Right.
And the number of new tests over the previous week seemed to be pretty consistent with previous weeks. I didn't see a big drop.
Right, and our positivity rate did go down a little, which is reflective, I think, of the increase in test, testing that was done. So I hope that that's something that continues as well. I guess that's all I was trying to say.
We do also have to remember that the positivity rate is not an all-catching number. So pool testing is actually removed out of that. So I'm not sure if you've heard of pool testing or batch testing. It's when they use the same PCR machine to actually test a bunch of samples at one time. And out of that, let's say they run four samples at the same time and one of them is positive. They'll say all four need to be retested using a PCR. So that actually does play a role in our positivity numbers across the state. So we still have to kind of keep that in mind as if you increase the testing, that positivity rate actually, actually drops. I mean, because the people that are going to get testing are actually symptomatic people, most often than not, like a huge number of the people that have symptoms. So if it's still showing that like 10% of people are positive, those were 10% of those people that went for testing, most likely symptomatic, that 90% of them are not positive, even though they were saying they have symptoms. So again, it's not an all-encompassing number. I wouldn't weight it so heavy in making decisions.
Good point, thank you.
I did have a question for the school committee, if you guys don't have any other questions.
Go ahead.
So what are some of the metrics that you guys are using to, or guidelines to use, to go hybrid or to go eventually full-time in-person?
So the biggest driver for most of us is we haven't seen any in-school transmission. We had one classroom where the mitigation strategies weren't being followed by design, that's the nature of that classroom. But everywhere else where we're following these strategies, we're not seeing in-school transmission. So that tells us it, the strategies are working, the kids are safe, we're able to enforce the mask, we're able to enforce social distancing, hand washing, all that stuff. So we had that spike, you know, it got pretty hairy after Thanksgiving, we got pretty high. But in spite of those numbers, we're seeing an increase in positive tests of TPS members, but they weren't giving it to each other by coming into the buildings. And that's really the key factor for those of us who still vote for hybrid and believe the kids should be in school, why we feel that way.
I did take the liberty in actually reaching out to Medway Public School System. I think they actually have a best practice out there and they are in-person K through five. And they actually, I actually talked to Dr. Pyers is his name, he's the superintendent. And they created a dashboard with the BU School of Public Health. They did pay for it, but it helps with their metrics. And I'm not sure if I even have control of the screen to even show you their website of the transparency of what they're doing. But I can show you that they do use a weighted composite score, which takes into the community data, the state data. And basically from that, it just doesn't look at just the positivity rate because it is selection bias. They, they do use this score to help with their decision whether they're going to stay in-person and go fully remote. Obviously, if you have in-school clusters, it's a really good idea to actually shut down, stop the spread right there. So I think that's a very key component that you guys are using as well. They still haven't seen student-to-student transmission or student-to-teacher transmission as well. So what you were saying, Ryan, does actually hold true in most districts. But I definitely recommend reaching out to him and I, I have his email. He also has a Director of Wellness that he did task this entire project on. So again, working with the BU School of Public Health, that actually really did help them with their decision-making. When I did ask him about K through five, how they are more in-person, physical space was one key metric that they had and staffing, plus the overall factor that it's a lot tougher for kids K through five to learn remotely versus being in-person. And since the transmissions are low in school, they felt it outweighed the, the metric of staying home for more days. And the real big possibility of having, you know, the grandparents stay in the house with that child to make sure that they're on the computer, those are the ones that we actually want to protect from getting COVID. Especially since they're not even eligible for the vaccine yet, hopefully very soon. But those are the ones we kind of want to keep out of that household setting. So if it's not really being transmitted in school, they, they went ahead and kind of made the decision of how can we get the kids back in there? And I know another thing is transportation is usually a big issue. They actually did double bus runs to help with that. So again, he had a lot of ideas that I think would be very cool to see that the, the school committee looks out to them.
Yeah. Those are great points. From day one, you know, Dr. Flanagan has been beating the drum and we're all on board that context matters. So because of that, we've never picked a single metric or a combination of metrics and drew a line in the sand and said, if we hit this, it's going to force our hand. We want to look at everything with context of what's driving that metric. So the positivity rate was up to, I think, almost 14% in town. We had almost 200 new cases over a two-week period. But the context of it was, we weren't seeing the in-school transmission, so you know, we voted as a board to continue with the hybrid. It sounds like, you know, Medway is doing a very similar thing. And personally, I think that's the right approach and that's what we've been doing. Any other school committee members have any questions?
Ryan, if I may, I just, I do have two questions. This is Becky Stanton. I'm just wondering if the Board of Health could comment about when our teacher population may be eligible for the vaccine?
I remember seeing, I thought it was
Phase two.
Is that right, Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie, do you want to speak to this since you just recently got some information on it or?
Yep, so teachers are in phase two for the COVID vaccine. And that runs between February to April. I think you guys saw how the state listed is with the bullet item. So in phase two, the early education and K through 12 workers are in the second bullet item.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. And then just one more question, this is Becky again. In light of, I mean, this is great news that we haven't seen the spike that we had thought we might see after these holidays. I was just wondering, you know, in the upcoming week or two, where we may still potentially see some uptick, are there any additional measures that you think we could employ in the school that might help us from seeing that uptick?
I, I think when I toured the school, I think you guys had a lot of good measures in place. Six feet of distancing is, is, is a really good key metric to keep in mind. You know, having the desk face forward, having the HEPA filters in there. I was really impressed with what Dr. Flanagan did set up in the school system there. If you add the BINX Now testing, which I think is going to be a program that's going to be offered, that will also help catch those asymptomatic positives that will also help with, you know, reopenings. But I, I think what you guys had in place was, was very good. Again, if I went back to Medway, they're even talking about the juniors and seniors in high school going down to three feet distance. There was some conversation around that with his Director of Wellness, so makes some sense on, on some points. But definitely recommend to reach out to the superintendent there to see if there's other stuff that he has on, on, on the docket. The, the cool thing was he also had a, a Masters in Public Health. So that kind of was right up his alley as well. So he used Medway a really good way.
And I just want to say really quickly, I think the teachers has a lot to do with how the kids are doing in school as well. I think the teachers probably keeping an eye on the kids when they're in school to make sure that they follow all the COVID-19 rules as far as social distancing, washing their hands, sanitizing their surfaces, all, all the good measures. And I think we have to give some credits to the teachers too for staying on top of things.
I agree. They're doing a great job on there and I hear them all the time, at least at the middle school, making sure that the mitigation strategies that we've employed are being followed. One thing that I would like to add, and this is Michelle Riley, is that I think that the community as our partner in this is an important step. I think that when people are symptomatic and they keep their students home and follow the protocols that are set forth for students that are symptomatic or staff members as well, when there is exposures to COVID in the community, that they follow the quarantine and isolation guidelines as outlined by the state. We try really hard to make sure that the community gets the information that they need to make sure they understand how to isolate and quarantine appropriately. But we do need the cooperation of our families to make sure that, that these guidelines are being followed. I think one thing that is really important and what is helping our numbers is that often, like I said before, the cases in the schools anyway are generally household, from households. So one thing that has helped us immensely is when families are quarantining, so the kids are not in the building. If we get a positive case of one of our students or staff members, oftentimes they've already been on quarantine, so they haven't been in the building during the infectious period. So I think that is an important part of what is helping us with the lack of spread within the schools. So I'd just like to make sure that families work with us and help us keep illness out of the building, COVID or anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Please, thank you. This is directed to Michelle and also to anyone on the Board of Health Board and the Administration for the School Committee, the Squad for the School. There is a in-school testing program currently being rolled up by the state and the Department, the state and the Department of Education. Is that something that the Board of Health gets involved with as well? It is that, in your opinions, something that could be beneficial to Tinsborough Schools?
You referring to the pool testing that the state is considering rolling out?
Well, there was a, I don't know what that is. There was a, a couple of schools testing, in-school testing for COVID. I don't have the name of it in front of me. And it was tested out in a few schools and now it's being rolled out to any school that wants it.
Oh, I, perhaps you'll refer it, Michelle, now. Yeah, at the beginning, we opted not to enroll into the BINX Now because it was a pilot program. And we, the nurses, we've been working with the same staff that we work on in a typical year. So we really didn't have the additional staff to take on that extra role. Plus, being a pilot, you, there are oftentimes with something new, some unintended consequences. And given the timing and our staffing, I thought it would be better if we waited to see how it worked out in other districts first. And I haven't heard any reports back either way, so I would definitely need to look into that. I do know that there was a memorandum that just came out that the state is looking to employ a pool testing, which is more of a screening. So rather than testing individuals that are symptomatic, so people that would ideally develop symptoms during the school day and then be tested. This would be for asymptomatic people. You would test people probably on a schedule, but not for any other reason other than to screen the building to potentially catch positive cases of COVID that perhaps are asymptomatic and that we wouldn't have been aware of. And the way pool testing works, and Michael Ryan Roach alluded to it earlier, it's a kind of economical approach to testing where you kind of batch test. So you test multiple people, but they're tested all together in one, in one testing cycle, let's say. And then if that batch comes up positive, then there are some guidelines that that whole batch would need to be quarantined. There is a webinar on this tomorrow and before I rush to judgment on this either way, I'm really interested to hear what the webinar will say. And then I know that Dr. Flanagan and Sarah Lewenzek also plan on being part of the webinar tomorrow. So collaboratively, I mean, once everybody learns a little bit more about it, I think maybe we could make a little bit more of an informed decision.
Rob, I did actually talk to Medway about that particular subject. And they did do that in September with the, the teachers. Is they did touch, test them with the BINX Now, as well as they plan, I think, next week doing the students. And hopefully with the, the state doing this BINX Now testing as well. Again, it helped with their unions, the teacher union, letting them know that we're going to be doing this testing. And it definitely helped reassure members of the school that there was some testing going on. I know my hospital system does asymptomatic testing. It's just, you know, walk in, set up an appointment and do it. Within the first two weeks of doing it, again, asymptomatic, I think we had 1,200 people that I 1,200 unique people that signed up and did it. And we found 24 positive cases and that would equal like a 2% positivity rate, just asymptomaticly testing. So I would recommend adding it or trying to jump onto it. Again, Medway does it. They made their nurses go, I think, on the day that they were off on Wednesdays to do more training. Whatever training was involved on those days, they were doing the training on those particular days. So again, I I would recommend, I think, any amount of testing would would definitely be helpful in capturing those asymptomatics. And if, I think what Michelle was saying, and you might have to think about what if those four teachers that tested that batch or someone came back positive and they now have to be quarantined? With the CDC reducing the length of quarantine, I think it's now down within like seven days. Again, if you're asymptomatic, you might have to be out for a day or two to go get the actual PCR, the nasal pharyngeal swab. But if you can flex like that, or you do it on certain days of the week, like maybe Sunday or Wednesday or something like that, you might be able to implement it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other school committee members have questions? Okay. I want to thank you Board of Health for allowing us to join your meeting tonight. You've been very informative, very helpful. Especially thank Michelle and Carrie. We have our weekly meetings. We look at the numbers. It's a very valuable meeting. I think it helps keep us all on the same page. And you know, these are tough times, but I think we're doing the best we can and I'm happy with it. I'll seek a motion to adjourn adjourn the school committee meeting.
I'll make that motion. This is Becky.
Jeff, split a second. A little roll call vote. Mr. Mullen?
In favor.
Mr. Tinnarella?
In favor.
Stan?
In favor.
Mr. Bo?
In favor.
Mr. Stucci?
In favor.
Mr. Murray?
In favor.
I am in favor. Seven zero zero, we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.